Thank you very much. As all members have received a copy of the minutes from the March 2023 meeting, the reading of those minutes shall be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to the minutes from the March meeting? I believe you received a copy, a hard copy with your packet, correct? Okay. I don't know. I assume that most people have received a packet, but I can check and see. Ms. Budkins, do you know if they are posted online currently? Okay, well, we kind of need to know if we're adopting them or not. Do you have an objection to the minutes, Mr. Spilo?
I haven't seen them.
Okay, okay. And you don't receive a packet, is that what you are?
I opted out, yes.
Okay, all right. So let's just see if they are online. Mr. Spilo is saying that he did not receive his copy in the mail. Okay, so, okay. So, Mr. Spilo, would you like to review a copy of the minutes that someone would offer you so that we can move forward with this, or?
Am I the only one? So I'll waive my rights here.
Is there anyone else that is objecting to something that was contained in the minutes this evening? I don't hear anyone else objecting, but we're happy to share you a hard copy if you'd like. Otherwise, if not, okay, thank you. Does anyone who did receive a copy have any proposed changes? Hearing none and absent objection, the March minutes stand adopted upon unanimous consent. I do not believe that there were any announcements scheduled for this evening, so before we begin, I just want to review a couple of our voting procedures. You have five screens around the room. You are welcome to use those screens. Hopefully, they are easy to see. All clickers have been tested for battery life prior to them being given to you. If you have any questions about your clicker, you can go to the clerk's office. They'll slowly be moving their equipment to the front of the table. Catherine LaBalbo is also available to help you if you believe you have a problem with your clicker. We'll post the voting grid. It'll look the same as it did last time. It will be alphabetically, and then those participating online will be on the far right side of the screen this time. The voting window will again be two minutes long. Before the voting window closes, I'll say it's closing shortly, and you have an opportunity to just check and make sure that your clicker box is not grayed out. Super important, if anyone in the room has a problem with their clicker, or while the voting window is open, they are to rise, get a raise a point of information, and we will address it with the possibility of having to keep the window open while we are doing that. For our members who are participating online, if you have a point of information or a point of order, the way we have been doing it since, I think it was April of 2020 when we started on this journey, was you need to contact your district chair or a member in your district who may be in the room, and they will assist you in being recognized and raising a point of order. Do not use the technical support line if you want to use a if you want to raise a point of order or a point of information. That's not what it's for. If you do have a technical issue, though, and you're online, the phone number is 203-992-8383. That's all posted online, and you may use that to contact somebody in tech support who can help you. Also, this is probably towards the end of the meeting. If you leave the meeting, please do not turn in your clicker while the vote is open. We don't want anyone, while they are bringing it up to the desk and checking it in, to inadvertently hit their hit a button and change how they intended to vote. And please, please, please do not take your clicker home with you. We had four people take them home last month, and it was a real pain to chase you down. So please don't take them home, okay? So with all of that, that brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. I notified the membership that I would recommend the following organization of our agenda based on the reports received. Consent calendar items 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9, and then separately 1, 3, 10, 11, 12, and 13. And I did get confirmation from the BET, which met earlier this evening, that the three items that we were waiting for related to education, they did adopt, so they now come before us. That was provisional. If they had not passed them, we wouldn't be taking them up. So pursuant to our rules, I will designate items 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9 to our consent calendar, and if those items remain on our consent calendar, we will have no committee reports, and the only thing you are going to hear is what I am about to say, assuming I can find my call. Here it is. Okay. Item number 2 is the appointment of Bernard Armstrong to the Harbor Management Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2026. Item number 4 is the appointment of Lyle Gibbons to the Harbor Management Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2026. Item 5 is the appointment of Vivian Wu to be a member of the Board of Parks and Recreation for a term expiring June 30, 2026. Item 6 is the appointment of Jude Collins to be a member of the Condemnation Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2027. Item number 7 is Sardar Umar to be a member of the Condemnation Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2027. Item number 8 is the appointment of Kimberly Blank to be a member of the Claims Committee for a term expiring December 31, 2023. And item number 9 is a $1.1 million appropriation for out-of-district sped to be sent to account Are there any objections to those items being placed on the consent calendar? Okay. Craig, could you please prepare the vote for the first item, which is our consent Okay, Craig's going to get that for us. Yeah, we got to switch the screen. Okay. So let me know when you're ready. Are you ready? We're going to put the two minutes on. You may start it, and then we're going to open the vote. Start, okay. The voting window is now open. Will the members please cast your vote on the consent calendar? If you are in favor of adopting those items, you would vote yes. I've just been reminded by our tech team that for some people who are participating online, you may be using your old password. You need to use the new password that was sent to you at the end of February. So please make sure you are using what is a six-character password, not a random four-digit I believe we're waiting on a we're not we're going to leave it open. There are a couple of people who have arrived late, and they need to get their clicker. Kim, has everyone received a clicker? Okay, so we are all set. This is a good time to just check your clicker, make sure that you can see your name. If you've chosen to vote on this item, as being registered as a blue square, there are a couple of people who are gray. I don't know if they're here or if they are not voting. Okay, I'm going to, Craig, I am going to close the vote because it appears that no one is suggesting that they have a problem. We're not aware of anyone on the tech support line that's saying that they have an issue, so I am going to close the vote. Craig, please close the vote. Okay. The vote on the consent calendar, or the results of the consent calendar, are 165 in favor, one opposed with no abstention. Those calendar items have carried. Craig, could you please show the vote? There you go. Okay, that now brings us to the first of our separate items. I'd like to recognize Bob McKnight. Item 1 was postponed from last month, so that is now before us, but I believe Mr. McKnight has a motion to offer from the Appointments Committee.
That the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a regular member of the Inland, Wellands, and Watercourses Agency, R5, for a term expiring October 31, 2026.
Okay, thank you. Can you just we, since it was postponed, it was already before, so if you could just read the Appointments Committee motion, we can get that before us.
Yes, Bill couldn't make it to our last meeting, so I'd like to make a motion out to postpone to our June meeting. Yes, Appointments Committee was unable to meet with Mr. Galvin, so we would like to make a motion to postpone to the June meeting.
Okay, thank you. That motion being offered on behalf of a committee does not require a second. Are there any objections to postponing Mr. Galvin's nomination to our June meeting? That motion can be adopted upon unanimous consent. Any objections? Okay. Hearing none, that motion to postpone item 1 to our June meeting stands adopted upon unanimous consent. And just as a reminder, our May meeting is reserved for the budget, so when we are postponing anything at this meeting, it automatically rolls over to June. In May, we don't add things to our budget agenda unless it's an emergency. Okay. Item number 3 now comes before us. Again, that was brought before us last month, so it is currently already before us. We don't need a motion to bring it up. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item, please? Mr. Harris, Chairman of our Finance Committee.
Hello, thank you. Finance took up item 3, and Joseph McHugh, the fire chief, Chris Pratiko, the fire marshal, appeared before us to discuss the fee. Basically, it's only going to apply to developments which are three or more dwelling units. The fee is patterned after similar fees in other Fairfield County towns. There was very little discussion in Finance because this was the second read, and we had discussed it already in last month's meeting as reported. No controversy here either. Finance passed this 10-0-0 with two people absent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May we have the next committee report?
Madam Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, Town Services met to discuss the second read of the Fire Marshal's Fee Ordinance. To remind you, our vote from the previous meeting was 12-0-0. Our District 8 delegate, a District 8 delegate, proposed a motion to the item. The motion was to allocate the fees collected to the recently created Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The motion was seconded, and we discussed. I pointed out to the committee that the town legal department was aware of the motion, and a preliminary review found it might not be in order. We discussed the Affordable Housing Trust Fund with the new trust chair, Bob Borlak. He explained that the fund was reviewing currently reviewing 10 proposals, and it had already led to the downsizing of some proposed buildings. We discussed the contributions to the fund, which have mainly come from the town's American Rescue Act funds. We may call them COVID funds. Payments with only we the payments have come from those funds with only small contributions from the public so far. During the discussion, it was proposed that the motion move only 50% of the fees to the trust fund and include a sunset clause of five years, or if the town reached its 10% affordable housing threshold. The committee voted on this motion and the amendment to the motion, or the amendment to the motion and 9-2 with District 3 absent. The no votes thought the fees should go to the general fund as proposed, or the fire department. Vote on item 3, as amended before us, was voted 8-1-1 with Districts 2 and 3 absent. Upon further review since our meeting, the Law Department has found the motion not to be in order. There will be discussion of that, I'm sure. If the First Selectman's Office and BET approve the allocation of the funds to the trust, we can amend it in the future. What will Town Services will not be bringing the amendment. As I previously stated, Town Services voted 12-0-0 on the motion as presented. Our Town Services delegate, Cheryl Moss from District 8, will be bringing a motion on her behalf that should be acceptable to the Town Law Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Kip Bergweger, Chairman of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, members of the RTM, honored guests. We met on Monday, two months, two weeks ago. This was a second read, and the first time we passed 12-0-0 on legal order and 11-1-0 on the merits. We had Chief McHugh and also Karen Fasiliotis from the BET. The chief commented that proposed fees are based on those charged in other towns in the area. He believes them to be very fair. In response to a question, he said he did not know if those other towns also channels their fees into the general account. Our vote on this was 12-0-0 on legal order, 12-0-0 on the merits, but we did not take up the amendment because it hadn't been made yet.
Thank you very much. Was that the last committee? BOC did not take this up, is that correct? Okay, thank you. Okay. So my understanding is, Ms. Moss, do you have an amendment that you are planning to offer, or a motion that you're planning to offer?
Should I just read the amendment as?
Yes, why don't you describe what you're doing, and then you can can introduce.
Good evening, members of the RTM and Madam Moderator. This amendment that I'm proposing is in keeping with the intent of the amendment that was proposed and approved by Town Services, in that the amendment will still put money towards the Affordable Housing Trust while still retaining money for the general fund. And there will still be a sunset clause in it, just as was approved by Town Services. Basically, what it does is reduces the fee. This is this is where it can still remain in legal order, as I understand it. So it reduces the fee paid or charged by the fire department to $2.50, and then adds on a surcharge, which is in legal order for the RTM to do, of $2.50, which would then be allocated to the Affordable Housing Trust. So I think that explains it. Do you want me to read it, or?
I think that explains it. I think if you read it, because you have so many changes to the whereas clauses, it might get a little confusing. Okay, so that motion coming on behalf of an individual does require a second. Is there a second to that motion? Okay. Now, this is similar, a little bit like Roundhog Day, to where we were last month. Motion, got a second. The chair is now going to ask the Assistant Town Attorney for her opinion on this, and depending on how she renders her opinion, it will be determined whether or not we are going to accept this. So I would now ask Aminah Ahmad, our Assistant Town Attorney, to provide the Law Department's opinion on Ms. Moss's motion to amend this ordinance.
Good evening, Madam Moderator, members of the RTM and guests. My name is Aminah Ahmad, Assistant Town Attorney. The proposal that Ms. Moss just read was sent to us about an hour and a half ago. I have had a chance to take a look at it, and essentially, what it does is very similar to what the prior amendment was proposing, that to take 50% of the fee that the fire marshal has proposed and reallocated to the Greenwich Affordable Housing Trust. So even though it's worded as a surcharge, it is our opinion that it is still taking the same approach as the original proposed amendment on which we had been asked to opine. I believe most of you have seen the opinion that we had provided this morning, followed by an analysis provided by Mr. Byrne. And as you may have seen in the in the two analyses that were given, the the original amendment, which said 50% of the fees would be reallocated to the Greenwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund, it was the Law Department's opinion that that would not be in legal order, and and our response is the same to this proposed amendment, because it essentially does the same thing, even though it's being called a surcharge. A surcharge, a true surcharge would be an amount over a fee that's being proposed. Here, the fire marshal is proposing a $5 fee. If the RTM wishes to impose a surcharge, which it would then allocate to the Greenwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund, it should really be a true surcharge, meaning an amount that's over the fee that's being proposed, and not simply reworded as a surcharge, just like the First Amendment said, we'll take 50%. The second percent is saying, instead of 50%, we're going to take that $5 and split it in half, $2.50 to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and $2.50 to the fire marshal. So essentially, it's saying the same thing, and what what the Law Department is saying, looking at the two proposed amendments, this one is not in legal order either. And I can go into some of that detail, which was provided in an email we sent out, which was then circulated to the entire membership. But essentially, by taking the fee and taking half of it and saying, we're going to reallocate it to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the the RTM is stepping outside the scope of its authority, where you have the fire marshal and the Board of Estimate and Taxation, which have said that there's going to be a $5 fee for this plan review, which then gets put into the general fund, and that's where it will stay until it's used for other purposes. But by proposing that half of that would then be unilaterally allocated by the RTM to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is not in legal order, as we said in our email this morning, because you're reallocating and reappropriating funds that are meant for the general fund and meant to be spent in a different way, perhaps, and taking it and giving it to someone else, in this case, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So perhaps it comes down to semantics a little bit, but in this situation, it's our opinion that whether you call it 50% of the fee or $2.50 of the $5 fee, you're really talking about the same thing. So in order for it to be a true surcharge, it should be a surcharge over the fee that's being proposed. I do want to say also that what that how that might impact what the fire marshal has proposed, what the BET and the Office of the First Selectmen has proposed, has not been evaluated by any of your committees, meaning if the RTM truly wishes to do a surcharge and say, okay, so the fee is $5, we wish to impose a surcharge of a dollar on every $5, is that a fee that the fire marshal believes would be appropriate? Is it consistent with what other municipalities in the area are doing? So there are some other ancillary issues I think this body should consider when determining whether they wish to go with a surcharge or not. So we'd like you to keep that in mind as well, as you deliberate on this proposed amendment, if the modern if Madam Moderator believes that's appropriate. But at this point in time, we do not believe that the amendment as proposed is in legal
Thank you very much. Okay, so you, Moderator, oh, sorry, Mr. Byrne, District 6, yes. Sure, come to the podium, please.
I am extremely surprised by what I just heard. If we could go to the videotape, I heard the Assistant Town Attorney say, the way you could do this is an act of fee, a reviewing fee of $2.50 per 1,000, that would be placed in the general fund, and then enact a surcharge on that fee of whatever amount you want. And and you could do that. That is, that is what I heard, and that is a correct interpretation of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund ordinance, as well as this Fire Marshal review ordinance. What I then heard seemed to be a confusion on the part of the Law Department, that the $5 fee was established by the First Selectmen and the fire marshal. That is not how ordinances are adopted in this town. The Board of Selectmen have authority over traffic and parking ordinances only. The RTM is the ordinance-adopting authority in town, with the exception for land use regulations, which is P&amp;Z. There's no $5 anything if the RTM, when it reviews this ordinance, amends it, the number. And I'm not sure, I mean, I think I know what's happening here, but is everyone aware that the amendment that was made was to set a review fee of $2.50 per 1,000 that would go to the general fund, and a surcharge on that of $2.50 per 1,000 that would go to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? And believe me, I'm not advocating that we do this, but what I am advocating is that we do not let the Law Department and other bodies of town restrict our lawful authority to enact ordinances. What we heard has no sound legal basis. We are the ordinance-adopting authority. We can do what was proposed. It is in legal order, and if the Law Department is not going to change that opinion, then I appeal the opinion.
Okay. So there is an, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, is there a second? There's a second, okay. So there is an appeals process, and we we have the right to do that. So. So Craig, can you put, does anyone else want to debate that? You may debate, the, the appeal is debatable. Does anyone else want to come to the podium and debate that? Anyone? Okay. So Craig, could you put up the vote for appeal, the ruling of the Law Department? And just as a reminder, it's, it's a, yes, it's a majority vote. It's also 50%. So to send this appeal, this opinion on appeal, it requires 50%. And what that would do is it would send the opinion of the Law Department back to Legislative and Rules and the Law Department for a study, and then they would come back with a report at our next meeting, that would be in June, and the RTM would have an opportunity to vote on whatever their recommendation is. So right now, if the appeal is successful, all you are doing is sending the decision to Legislative and Rules and the Town Attorney for further study to come back in June. Okay? Yes, there are lots of hands raised. So is that Aaron Leonard? Okay, stand up, please. Why don't you come to the podium, so we can hear your question?
I can project.
Okay.
Supporting clarification, this is only a second. I recall the line, "No vote on this appeal," for our purposes, then, "Deal is signed."
Uh, well, you-
Mark, Craig, you would have no further discussion as amended. How do we go?
Correct. So if you vote, if you, if the appeal is turned down, then this item would not go forward as amended. You've killed that. And then you would have an opportunity to vote up or down on the merits of Item 3 without the Moss Amendment. Okay. Somebody else had a question. Ms. Jansen, why don't you come to the podium?
It is my understanding the fiscal year '24 proposed budget has expenditures related to the revenue associated with this ordinance. What happens with that piece?
Well, they would still get, as, as you heard, they would get $2.50 per 1,000, as opposed to $5 per 1,000. So however much they were anticipating, you would reduce it essentially by 50%. I don't know how much-
A shortfall could occur, and perhaps expenditures need to be reduced in order to compensate for that shortfall. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, yes, Mr. Spilo, please come to the podium. I'd like to hear you at the podium, please.
It's just a point of information. It's only the amendment that gets referred, and the ruling regarding the amendment. Can we not take a vote on the item?
Yes, you would be able to. So what you-
So we will have a vote on the item as it appears on the call.
Correct. And then you would presumably, if the Law Department and the Town Attorney come back, I mean, I'm sorry, the Law Department and Legislative and Rules come back in June, we would have an opportunity to hear the report, vote on whatever it is, and then revisit the amendment if it, if it, if it had been adopted, yeah, this evening. Any other questions? Okay. I'm sorry. Glenn Kaner, come to the microphone, please. Still come to the microphone.
This is not intended to impede the, the vote, but I, I follow my emails. I did not get, I was surprised to see Mr. Byrne objection this afternoon. I got six or seven of those memos today, but I did not get the legal opinion. So we can go forward with the vote, but I would ask that maybe the clerk, it could be my mistake, but I'm asked that they send it out again. I have not-
So you are correct, that the legal opinion was sent to, I believe, the Town Services Committee, because that was the committee offering it. I think Kip Bergweger, as Chairman, was on that distribution list.
Okay. But when I saw Mr. Byrne-
And the BET was included in it.
I haven't seen the opinion, so before Legislative and Rules gets it, I'd like to see it.
Sure, okay.
From my emails, I included the opinion in the first email this afternoon.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to debate this? Please come to the podium. Okay. If not, we're, we're gonna prepare for the vote. And this would be by a majority vote to appeal the ruling of the Law Department. Yes, Mr. Byrne, why don't you come to the podium? I know you can project, but fair is fair.
No, I think all speakers should come to the lectern, because we're being televised. And there's a microphone here, but not out there. I heard you say that if this appeal is adopted, you would nevertheless, and, and so the question of whether there will be an amendment offered is, is then unresolved, that you would then hold a vote on the item?
Right. So I had asked Ms. Ahmad, Ms. Ahmad, would you like to come to the podium?
May I comment on that? An amendment has priority over a main motion. So we have to decide if there's going to be an amendment before we take up the main motion. That's, that is basic parliamentary procedure.
Okay.
There is a order priority of motions. And the main motion has the lowest priority of all.
Okay. So then revising that, if the motion to amend and passes and is sent to the Legislative and Rules Committee, you are suggesting that we would suspend the vote on the actual ordinance until June, when that item and that amendment comes back for review by the RTM? Correct? Is that what you're saying? Okay. That's what we would do. I apologize, Mr. Spilo, I'm amending what I said. Okay. So are we, Mr. Newman, please come to the podium.
I'm not a lawyer, but my understanding was, we could amend an ordinance at any point, at any time. So if we pass the ordinance tonight, we can come back and amend it in any form in June, July, next year, if we would like. So couldn't we vote on it tonight, even if the amendment is not before us, or being We can make it an ordinance tonight, on the second vote.
So the motion to amend takes priority over the, the main motion. Mr. Byrne is correct. Is there anyone else that has a question, or would like to add to the debate before we call for the vote on this? Okay.
One more thing?
Yes, Ms. Moss.
I just wanted to be clear that what we're voting on right now is not the amendment itself, but on the objection to the-
Legal order.
Legal order. Okay? And, and, and part of that is the RTM's authority being challenged on, as to what we can do in our amendments, and what we do with, how we change ordinance. For instance, we, when the fee for the, the town dump was proposed, and we changed it. And so I think that's one of the things that is being considered here. So I just wanted to point that out to people, that we're not actually voting on the amendment itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to comment before we put up the voting screen? Okay. Craig, it's gonna say, "Motion to appeal," oh, good, "motion to appeal the ruling of the Law Department." If you are in favor of sending what is, we'll call it the, the opinion of the Law Department to Legislative and Rules and the Town Attorney for consultation, to come back in June with a report that the RTM would then vote on, you would vote yes. If you were opposed to that, you would vote no. Okay? Does everyone understand? So yes means you would like to send this to Legislative and Rules and the Town Attorney for further study, to come back at our June meeting. Okay? Craig, can you prepare the vote, please? Okay, you'll have two minutes.
So it's open?
Nope, not yet. The voting window is now open. You may cast your vote. And for those who are participating online, if you can refresh your browser from time to time, so that you, your device doesn't fall asleep, that would be great.
Oh, I can't. I have to stop. Come on, just leave it with us. Yeah, yeah. All right.
are intending to vote. So please make sure that your, your square is blue if you're voting. share for a moment. Craig wants to check something. So the vote is still open, but the screen share is gonna go away for a second, and then it will come back. Craig, do you wanna reopen it, but as, okay, it's back. We're gonna close the vote. Has everyone voted who wants to vote, both online and in the room? Okay, good. Craig, could you please close the vote? Okay. Okay, I have the vote on the motion to appeal, and send this back potentially to Legislative and Rules and the Law Department for review. Those in favor, 130. Opposed, 55. Abstaining, 2. The motion has passed. Craig, can you please show the, the vote? Okay. So that will send the item back to the Law Department and Legislative and Rules for review, which means we will not, we will await the outcome of that report in June, before we take a final disposition on Item 3 this evening. Okay. That now brings us to our next item on the agenda, which is Item Number 10. Who is introducing Item Number 10? Do we have a member of Havemeyer here?
Ah, Joe Kelly, come on down. Joe Kelly, the Chairman of the Board of Education. And Mr. Kelly, my understanding is you are offering a substitute resolution. Is that correct? No, that would be Item 9, which went on our consent calendar. This is Item 10, which is $545,000 for Havemeyer flood.
So wait, wait, wait. You have to read the resolution, but it's a substitute resolution, and it sounds like you do not have that language, so I'm gonna give you my-
I do not.
You're gonna read this, hand it right back to me, and you're only reading this little bit. Read right there, okay? Read that.
Dan Quigley, can you come up here a second? It's actually funny, but I am dyslexic and can't read a damn thing. So, Dan, can you read this for me, please?
My reading glasses, Joe, this could be fun. Can you hold it over there?
Exactly. Want to borrow?
This is what I'm supposed to read?
Yes.
Just the resolve. Item 10? Oh, there we go. Oh, just wait a minute, hold on. I don't wear the green glasses here. And they're foggy, too. All right. Item 10, substitute resolution, interim appropriation for the Havemeyer flood project and overtime. Resolve that the sum of $545,000 is hereby appropriated, and to be added to the following account, Capital Non-Reoccurring Fund, Z is in zebra, 68059560, to be determined for Havemeyer, Havemeyer flood project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. You need this back?
I do.
And do you want to say a few words about it?
In a minute.
In a minute? I'll wait.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, Item 10, will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Item 10 has been moved and seconded, and is now before us. May we have the, you're not up yet. You go to your seat.
I shall.
May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item, beginning with Stephen Rubin, our Vice Chair of our Education Committee?
Good evening, Madam Moderator, RTM members and guests. Item 10 is a request for $545,000 to cover repairs related to a February flood at the Havemeyer Building. On February 4th, a solder joint on a pipe on the top floor of Havem, the Havemeyer Building failed. This happened over a weekend, and by the time the leak was discovered, the flowing water, pages are stuck together. The flowing water, water had damaged two offices on the top floor, the boardroom on the main floor, and the entire print shop on the lower level. As they assessed the damage, they found that these areas contained asbestos and lead paint, which required abatement. Blaise Levitin, COO for the Board of Education, explained that they expect the entire amount of these repairs to be covered by insurance, less the $100,000 deductible. Note that because of the town's accounting practices, we are appropriating the full amount into the spending account, and the insurance proceeds, which will be $100,000 less, will be received into a different general fund account. He said that this request was based on estimates from their contractors for this work. He noted that in the print shop area, they will restore the walls, ceiling, and floor of the room, but will not specifically set it up as a print shop until a further determination on its use is made. The committee asked several questions regarding the cause of the flood, and the long time before it was discovered. We noted that while individual causes have been different, BOE buildings have suffered multiple similar incidences with extensive water damage that went undiscovered for a prolonged time. We asked about the- We asked about the installation of water sensors or increased monitoring by the maintenance staff. We were told that they are speaking with our insurers about having water sensors installed. There does not seem to be a plan to increase monitoring by the maintenance staff. We also asked about the need to do this work given the future use of the Havemeyer building, which has been under discussion. Since there are no immediate plans for the renovation or repurposing of the building, any future work would likely be several years off. These areas are completely unusable and have been rendered unusable. For, and additional areas have been rendered unusable. For example, the superintendent's office is closed because it is adjacent to the damaged boardroom. We voted 11-0-1 to approve this item. District 11 abstained because they were absent during the presentation of this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Brooks Harris with the Finance Committee report.
Thank you. Blaise Levitin and Dr. Tony Jones gave an overview of the need for funds to cover expenses for flood response and repair at the Havemeyer building excluding print shop equipment. On Saturday, February 4th, 2023, a soldered 90-degree elbow coupling connected to a pipe on the air chiller in the office suite in the second floor of the Havemeyer failed, resulting in the flooding. Several floors were flooded, as previously described. Finance expressed concern that this item was coming before the RTM before it had been recommended by the BET, which is out of normal order. Dr. Jones indicated the BET would meet before the RTM and that this item would only remain on the agenda if the BET approved it beforehand. Finance has repeatedly emphasized the need to invest in maintenance and questioned whether we need more water sensors or automatic flow interrupters since we've experienced several flooding incidents recently. Director of Facilities, Dan Watson, indicated that it was not a maintenance issue, although the unit that failed was very old and the last of its kind in the building. Finance questioned how much of this cost would be borne by insurance and what would happen to our premiums and deductibles. There appeared to be some disagreement as to how fast our deductible was rising and the impact of such events on this pricing. Clearly, we're gonna fix the building. The only question is, what are we, are we doing all we can to prevent incidents like this in the future? Finance voted 7-2-1 with two absent to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ooh, it's a race to the podium. Mr. Spilo or Ms. Jansen, who's going first? Mr. Spilo with the Public Works Committee report.
Good evening, Madam Moderator, members of the RTM. Public Works took up item 10. Some committee members were unhappy with this. It was explained that the rules of the RTM called for the Public Works Committee to review planning and construction, maintenance, and renovation of town buildings, and the rules make no distinction whether those buildings are managed by the Board of Education. Further, according to the RTM rules, Public Works has overlapping responsibility with finance for our financial items over $50,000, which tend to be construction-related. Lastly, as successor to the Building Committee, the Public Works Committee appoints the RTM representative to Building Committees and reviews their reports, as the committee did during the last meeting. Some committee members were not satisfied. The committee took up the discussion of item 10 jointly with Finance. Mr. Levitin and Mr. Watson presented. Mr. Watson reported, as you heard, that the flood was a failure in a joint in the piping of an air chiller. Mr. Watson said the unit was off at the time of the failure. Mr. Watson did not know why the internal water loop between the evaporator and the air handler had an unlimited, limited supply of water. Mr. Watson did not know why the water supply to the unit was left on during the build, during the winter when the unit was itself was off. Mr. Watson indicated that all building shut-off switches were manual, and there were no automatic cutoffs anywhere. He indicated there were also no water sensors, alarms, or switches, or automated switches. The flood was detected by fire alarms set off by the water running through the ceilings. The Board of Ed, as you heard, is looking into installing such cutoffs and sensors. Similar units have failed noncatastrophically, and those units have been replaced with other types of air conditioning units. There were no similar units left anywhere in Greenwich Public School buildings. I won't go into the Finance. Our discussion in committee revolved around the lack of inexpensive water sensors and auto shutter valves, especially given the history of flooding at BOE facilities. Other issues were the lack of details on repair costs and concern that the item was coming to the RTM before the BET had acted on it. The committee nonetheless voted 6-5 in favor, with those abstaining wanting more information and a BET vote prior to approving the item.
Thank you. Ms. Jansen, Chairwoman of the BOC.
Good evening. Your Budget Overview Committee took up these two call items, given the large size of the request totaling $820,000 on the eve of the Town and Board of Ed May budget vote next month. We also wanted to give a close review because the BET had uncharacteristically not yet vetted and approved the two appropriations before coming to the RTM for approval. Since there was no school press release, nor was it written up by the local media, many of the BOC members were not even aware of the significant Havemeyer flooding event that occurred in the first week of February 2023 that damaged three floors, including the superintendent's office, and took out the town's centralized printing capability. I, as BOC Chair, attended the day before the BOC's committee meeting, the BET audit meeting, which coincidentally was updating the BET on the Havemeyer property insurance claim. The town's Director of Risk Management, Megan Damato, informed the BET it appeared the flood was based on a mechanical failure and not weather-related, and the cause was still inconclusive, and Chubb Insurance's inspection is active and ongoing. The real compelling information, however, was Damato's reveal that two years ago, both the town and the schools were offered at no cost Chubb Insurance's water sensor program that would install water monitoring, leak detection, and water shut-off equipment to prevent property damage and any disruption in keeping the town and school buildings open and operating. Damato relayed the town had accepted Chubb's free offer and implemented the water sensor program. However, the school administration had curiously declined to implement the water sensor program. This was an unusual response for BOC Committee members to learn, given the numerous school flooding incidents over the recent years, including MISA flooding in 2016, 2018, and 2020, the COSCOB school flood in 2018 in a high-usage art room due to the installation of a household versus commercial-grade faucet, and the North Myannis School Roof Collapse Flood in 2021 with a misinstalled heavy sprinkler system placed over a drop ceiling that collapsed due to the weight. Thus, school water accidents happen anywhere and not just based on wear and tear. Damato shared that she has contacted the school administration once again, and they are now set up to meet with Chubb in early May to once again consider Chubb's water sensor program. However, it is no longer free, but still relatively a low cost. Damato also shared to the BET that because of the Havemeyer flood incident, a likely insurance premium increase will occur. The costs are likely to rise 16% from $2.1 million to $2.5 million, which the BET incorporated in our fiscal year '24 proposed budget. The deductible also will likely increase due to the flooding from $100,000 to $250,000 for a significant 150% increase. As we now see, flooding incidents have not only short-term costs, but also lasting permanent long-term costs. For your information, insurance property liability costs are not in the Board of Ed's budget, but rather the town's budget. The BOC voted to approve both items 10 and 11. However, in our approval, the BOC seeks also to relay to the school administration the BOC's hope that the water sensor management program be prioritized and implemented district-wide in a phased manner far beyond than co-locating near HVAC mechanicals. Further, the BOC would appreciate if in the future the school superintendent could inform immediately the community when a major flooding event like this occurs in the district. The BOC vote for both items 10 and 11 was 10-2-0. District 1 and 5 voted no. District 1 was not in support of the interim funding, and District 5 felt that the Board of Ed should not be located at the prime Havemeyer building and did not want to renovate without a new lesssee at the Havemeyer building. Thank you.
Thank you. There is no one that has signed up to speak, but Mr. Kelly, did you wanna say anything? Or are you good?
Sure. Why not? The exact same things that were just said were brought up to the, our staff. Our elected Board of Education officials also said, hey, where are the water sensors? There were none. I guess there was some comments, which was certainly not acceptable, that that room or that area has not flooded for 134 years. So why should we be considering checking that? That was not good enough for us. So of course, we wanna make sure that we follow all these recommendations by the insurance companies. As far as leaving the facility, I serve on the committee that's analyzing or considering moving out of that facility. We 100% as the Board of Education want to get out of that facility into a different facility. It's sitting in prime property in the middle of Greenwich Avenue, falling to pieces. 10 years ago, it was suggested that by the superintendent that was in charge at the time, that was about seven or eight superintendents ago, they suggested that the building around them was falling down, and they need to be relocated sooner than later. So we at the Board of Ed are considering certainly looking at that as soon as possible. And on the committee that's looking out for what we should be doing with the Havemeyer building, we are trying to do that as quickly as we can. But as far as addressing the flood issues, we need, because we don't have a plan in place or we don't have the process moving forward quickly enough to find an alternative location for the Board of Education, we need the conference room, we need the superintendent's office. This is a great opportunity to get out of the printing business. Prior to the flood, it was brought up that we are looking at getting out of the printing business because there are so many businesses or printing businesses out there that I have some friends in that business that say that their businesses are horrible. So what a great chance to take it away from us and give it to somebody else to do for us out of savings. And also with this opportunity with the flooding, also collect insurance money from it. So this money is being paid. The insurance company is paying it. We need to fix the two offices upstairs. We need to fix the conference room because it is used constantly. And we need to fix the superintendent's office. And that is what the money's going for. As far as the print shop goes, we're very happy to continue to analyze whether we need or don't need a print shop. The BET has approved the print shop money based on conditions which they worked together with the Board of Education on setting. So the both of us agreed on conditions that if we are not going in that business, then we don't need the money. If we are going into some sort of hybrid printing business, then we'll need some, if not all, of that money. So I agree with everything that's said. We're looking into it, and we're gonna talk to our staff at the Board of Education to make sure that, and we have clearly had some flood issues, and we have to address all the locations within our 15 buildings and make sure we adequately protect ourselves against floods. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Did anyone else wanna say anything before we go to the vote? Okay. Craig, could you please prepare the vote? I think it's item number 10, $545,000 appropriation for Havemeyer flood project and overtime. Okay. Let me know when you're ready. You ready? Okay, the voting window is now open. You may cast your vote. If you are in favor of the $545,000 appropriation for the Havemeyer flood project and overtime, you would vote yes. If you are opposed to that appropriation, you would vote no. I'm just gonna give you Jopinoids one more time. You have about 30 seconds left in the voting window. This is a good time to check and see if you have cast your vote, if that is your intention. Look at the screen, one of the five screens. See if it's gray, if it's blue or gray. Okay, we don't have anyone on the line correct for technical support, and there's no one in the room that seems to be saying, I'm sorry. Lynn McDaniel, do you have a problem with your clicker? No, that member needs, not you raise a point of order, that member needs to come to the podium and declare what the problem is. Could the member who has a problem please indicate what the problem is? I'm sorry, who is the member with a problem that we are keeping the vote open for right now? I'm sorry, Henry Orpheus, did you have a problem? Who was the person with the... Betsy Galindo, did you resolve your problem? Okay. So just to confirm the proper procedure, is the member with the problem needs to raise their hand and call the point of order or point of information? Point of information. Okay? So it would be helpful if the member does it, not somebody else who is not the member because we can't attend to the person who's not calling it. Is there anyone else who believes they have a problem with the clicker? Yes, Mr. DeMille Howe. Mr. DeMille Howe, let's see where you are. Mr. DeMille Howe, you are right there. And you have a blue square which suggests that you have voted in some way, shape, or form. How you voted, I don't know, but you have cast your vote. Is there anyone else before we close the vote? Martha Ozesmier. Yes, what is your point of information? Why don't you come to the podium? I can't hear you. You'll have to come to the podium, please.
I voted no, and it says yes over there.
Well, we haven't shown the vote yet.
You haven't shown it yet?
No. The vote has not been shown yet.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure.
Turner Schumaker.
Oh, Schumacher, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So you are right there. Mrs. Schumacher, you are right there. You have a blue square. I do not know how you voted, but you have cast a vote. So you might wanna look at your clicker right now and see if it says 1, 2, or 3, and that will correlate with whatever vote you intended to cast. Okay? 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 Okay. Have you resolved whatever... Okay, but... Okay. Mrs. Schumacher, have you cast a vote on that clicker? Okay. Is anyone else before we close the vote? Okay. Okay, are we set? Okay. Okay. Are you okay, Mrs. Schumacher? Are you okay?
Yeah, she's good.
Craig is going to close the vote. Craig, could you please close the vote?
Wait, don't leave me, I want to make sure it's right. She's 2, yeah, right.
All right, you're good, you can go sit now.
Jopanoyt's good.
Okay. Yes. So, well, remind them, okay, can we have the, are we going to tell them?
Does someone double-check the 1, 2, or 3?
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm hitting something.
Okay, I have the vote on item number 10. Those in favor, 174, opposed 11, abstaining 5. That motion has carried, that item has carried. Craig, could you please show the vote? There you go. Okay. That now brings us to item 11 on the call. Mr. Kelly, you get to come back and introduce that item, please. And you just need to read the resolve clause, so would you like me to?
Dan Quigley, my blind friend, can you come up and read it for the dyslexic fellow?
Mr. Quigley, do you have, do you have a copy of the call to read it?
So the blind guy's going to read for the dyslexic fellow, thank you.
This is a very, very generous audience for loaning me green and purple glasses, I appreciate it. This is 11.
Yes.
Please don't put this picture on the front of the paper.
It will be in.
No offense, Madam Select One. Resolve that the sum of $275,000 is hereby appropriated and to be added to the following account, TBD by the controller, referred to Education Committee and referred to the Finance Committee.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there a second? Will a member, I'm sorry, will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Item 11 has been moved in second and is now before us. May we have the committee reports that considered this item? Steven Rubin, our Vice Chair of the Education Committee, please.
Hello again. Item 11 is a request for $275,000 to cover damaged equipment in the print shop from the same February 4th leak incident as in item 10. Clayz Levitan, COO of the BOE, explained that they had separated this request from item 10 because the use of funds is still to be determined. He said that they are asking for the BET to approve this item with a condition that funds not be released until there is a plan for use of the funds for the future of the print shop. We've heard that the BET has approved that. He also explained that both items 10 and 11 will be part of a single insurance claim, but that that amount of insurance reimbursement for the lost equipment is still to be determined, while the amount of the reimbursement for the items in item 10 is more certain. The Board of Education Print Shop has been handling printing for both the Board of Ed and the Town Departments. Previously, the Town and the BOE had operated separate print shops, which had been consolidated into the print shop at the BOE. Mr. Levitan said that currently both the BOE and Town are outsourcing their printing needs at competitive rates. He said that there is a group working on what the future of the print shop should be, and whether it should be operated at the BOE Town Hall or outsourced. He acknowledged that it is likely that it will be at least three months before there is a plan in place. The committee discussed whether this item should be postponed. We noted that based on the timeframe Mr. Levitan laid out, it didn't seem like there would be necessarily a plan in place by our June meeting if it was postponed. We voted therefore to reject this item with a vote of 0, 8, 4. District 6, 8, 11, and 12 abstaining. Those who voted no on this item felt that it didn't meet the criteria for an interim appropriation, since the funds were not needed immediately, and there was no information about how the funds would be used. They also noted that there is uncertainty about the amount which insurance may cover. Some of the abstentions said that they don't have enough information either way, and that they believe the BOE may want to have a print shop again, or the insurance may cover the replacement costs. District 11 abstained because they were absent during the presentation for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Brooke Harris with Chair of Finance Committee.
Thank you. Clayz Levitan and Dr. Tony Jones discussed the needs for funds to restore the print shop equipment. Mr. Levitan indicated that the BOE is considering a variety of options for the future operation of the print shop, including outsourcing, and that there would be a full action plan developed at some point over the next two to three months. Several members with experience in related businesses indicated they thought it was likely the Town would find outsourcing this business to be the better model. Mr. Levitan assured Finance that this was one of the options being considered. Members asked if there was urgency in ordering new equipment, and Mr. Levitan indicated new equipment would not be ordered until the business model was clarified. Members asked if it would be possible to postpone an appropriation until this had been clarified, and no significant opposition was proposed. A motion to postpone item 11 until the June RTM meeting was made. Clearly, if the decision is made to outsource this going forward, then they wouldn't need to return, but if they do decide that they want to reinstate the print shop, at that point, we might have more information with respect to exactly the specifics of that proposal. And I will raise that motion to postpone at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Mr. Spilo, are you giving a report?
No.
And Ms. Jansen, are you giving a report?
I'm David.
Okay.
I really don't have anything further, Public Works took this up. We voted 0, 9, 2 against the appropriation. Those voting no felt the matter was not urgent and could await a final decision about the equipment outsourcing. Those abstaining wanted more information.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our committee reports. Mr. Harris, did you want to offer the finance motion?
The Finance Committee of the RTM moves to postpone item 11 until the June 2023 RTM meeting.
Okay. That motion being offered on behalf of a committee does not require a second, and is now before us. Debate on that motion. Mr. Harris, did you want to offer anything on behalf of your committee? No one has signed up to speak on that.
Okay, I will say that generally, finance would have been supportive of providing new equipment or funding the cost of outsourcing, because obviously, we need this stuff, but as a general principle, it's a better practice to have a specific plan in mind before seeking funds, and we're highly committed to that. So this gives an opportunity both to fund the needs of the Town and to have a better plan in place when we approve the funds, so that's why we did this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else want to comment? Okay, we can try adopting this upon unanimous consent, and if someone objects, we can take a record vote. Does anyone object to the finance motion to postpone this item to our June meeting? I'm sorry, is that an objection? Mary Flynn, are you objecting to that? Okay. Oh, no, you have to come to the, you have to, you have to come to the podium, and you have to offer your comments, and then we will take a record vote.
So I am objecting, because as Mr. Kelly said, the BET approved the money on condition so that they'll have to approve whatever is purchased, so it's just a delaying tactic, as far as I'm concerned. I'm happy to speak on the other part, too, but.
No, this is just the, if we get there, you are the sole speaker for the merits of item 11. Okay, so we are going to take a record vote on the finance.
Is it appropriate for me to address or not?
If you would like to enter this debate, you may.
Happy to, thank you.
This is, right, this is just on the motion.
Just on the motion.
To postpone to June.
Correct. I do not disagree with the motion. I can say that the idea or the concept, and understand where it came from, so we could understand whether we want to postpone this or not. I don't want to bring my other Board of Ed members into this, I guess, but I had made the suggestion that we do the analytics on the print shop. The staff was not necessarily on board with getting out of the print business, because a lot of times when you do something and you're accustomed to doing it, you want to continue to do things the same way. I didn't think it was very efficient. I run a lot of businesses, I've bought and sold a lot of businesses, and basically, I didn't think it was a good business for us to be in with the extra capacity out there. So what might happen is the Board of Ed, the staff, the superintendent, and the people that work for her, might need something that could be a hybrid between what we have now and what we're doing as far as outsourcing goes. Or the Town might have further demands on the use of the print shop, which we do for the Town. So once again, this has been my suggestion to the superintendent to do this. This flood created the opportunity for us to rush the process and address it more aggressively. My concern is my big, great idea might turn out to be a detriment to our Town and the printing they need and the schools. So the reason why we've asked for the money to be conditioned is if my big, great idea turns out to not be a very good one, and then we might have to go back to the printing business. I think it is a good idea, but I think we might, but to keep that money in limbo, giving us the opportunity to draw on it if we need it, because it is insurance money, then basically, I might be wrong and they might be right, and we might have to return into this business for the Town and the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yes, Mr. Rubin, please come to the podium.
Yeah, my question is this, if it's postponed until June, and the BOE hasn't decided yet what to do, can it be postponed again?
Sure.
Or it can be?
Yes. Okay. Anyone else have any other comments they want to make for the debate before we call for the vote? Okay. Craig, could you please prepare the vote? I think this one says, item 11, finance motion to postpone item 11 to June 2023. Okay. Let me know when you're ready to open it. Okay. The vote is now open. If you are in favor of the finance motion to postpone this item to June 2023, you would vote yes. You have about 30 seconds. Now's a good time to check your vote, if you are inclined to do that, and if you're So just look at your clicker, 1, 2, or 3, yes, no, abstain. I don't hear anyone on the online platform that's having an issue. Is there anyone that's having an issue in the room before we close the vote? All right, I don't hear anyone that has expressed an issue with their clicker. Okay, the result of the finance motion to postpone item 11 to June, those in favor, 161, opposed 30, abstaining 0, that item has passed. Craig, could you please show the vote up there? Okay. That now brings us to item number 12, which is the District 11 motion regarding full or hybrid meetings. Susan Fahey, Chairwoman of District 11, if you could introduce the resolution, please.
You want me just to read the resolve of what's on the call?
Yeah, you would just read the resolve clause and then, as it appears on the call.
Resolved, the representative town meeting of the Town of Greenwich hereby amends the rules, oh, wait, that's 13, sorry. Therefore, may be resolved, effective as of June 1st, 2023, all meetings of the RTM expressly, of the full RTM expressly excluding RTM Committee and District meetings will resume an in-person attendance-only basis with no further hybrid option for any member except otherwise approved by the moderator or the RTM.
Okay, thank you. That being offered on behalf of a district does not require a second, it is now before us. Maybe have the reports from the districts and the committees that considered this item. Ms. Fahey, why don't you go first, since it's your, this is your district report?
This is the district report. Okay. D11 met on March 15th, just two days after the big March meeting, in a special meeting to discuss, write, and vote on a motion to end hybrid option for our full RTM meetings. This specifically and on purpose did not include committee or district meetings. The motion is something we had been discussing in our district for quite a while, and I think that all of us have always agreed on the idiom that we are better together. I believe the many delays in the March meeting sparked a renewed interest to bring this before the RTM in April. As the April call deadline was that Friday, we decided to call a special meeting where 15 of the 23 members were able to attend. The item was originally proposed by Tom West and seconded by Greg Zorthian during our regular March meeting, however, our formal language had not been hammered out, or vote had not yet been taken. The comments from those who attended the March meeting mostly centered around delays in the meeting by those voting from home, a frustration in the lack of civility and kindness amongst the RTM members toward each other and the leadership of the RTM, and a frustration that some were abusing or overusing the hybrid system. Tom West acknowledged that coming to meetings in person is more difficult for some members, including himself, who does a lot of traveling, but added that it's important to show up. He was quoted as saying, "I find it less than responsible to not make an effort to be there. I think that showing up is part of the job and getting to know the people you work with and your neighbors is part of why we do this." He also discussed how virtual meetings are more expensive to conduct. Further research with the Town Clerk showed us additional $4,500 for onsite Meridia support for hybrid-use meetings is our cost. For those who care, there's more in the Explanos. Most shared stories, I will only give you some of the highlights. One of the people during the meeting had asked someone to repeat something they said because they couldn't hear as they were under their sink fixing, under their sink fixing something at their home. Others noted that some members do other things during the meeting, like folding laundry and walking dogs. The discussion also included comments that some members live in other states for large parts of the year. Another shared why we want, why would we want people who are snowbirds voting on ordinances like dogs at the beach in the wintertime when they themselves are off for those months? A similar story was shared about a member who was very upset about parking on Greenwich Avenue due to the restaurants having seating that was pushing into the streets during the winter holiday shopping month. to the current hybrid process. He also didn't like that we had a special meeting for a rule change. Michael Spiolo voted to abstain. He stated there, he was on the fence. He agreed that governance was better served when we're all together. However, he had a situation where he felt ill before a meeting, tested negative for COVID, and decided to retend to remote anyway. However, the next morning, he was positive. So he said that he would, he thought that might be interesting to have the ability to be remote maybe three times per elected term, or something like that. A few district members who voted yes said their minds were not made up on the issue, but they wanted to put the motion before the entire RTM and continued to have discussion about how the body could better develop a system for all of us going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to give the next report? Kip Bergweger, are you going to give the L and R report? Okay.
Legislative Rules Committee met two Mondays ago, and we had Adam Brodsky and Nerlan Pearson from District 11, and Amin Ahmad, the Assistant Town Attorney. Both the District 11 members are also members of Legislative and Rules. Delegate Adam Brodsky spoke on behalf of his district, and he noted, as mentioned, that the district believed eliminating remote attendance would develop a more comprehensive or cohesive RTM. In response to a question, what does the state of Connecticut require for public agency meetings of this nature? Amin Ahmad clarified that the state allows for all forms of meetings, in-person only, remote only, or hybrid, but noted that, as was the case before the COVID pandemic, in an all-person meeting, remote accommodation must be made for agency representatives who want to participate but cannot attend. These accommodations include ensuring the representative's ability to vote. Similar accommodations should need not be extended to members of the public. Glenn Kaner cited comments earlier in the day which suggested that an all-person meeting might result in a significant attrition in attendance at our meetings. District 11 members felt, however, that in-person benefits would add a layer of richness to the body, and the impetus of the motion was that some of the negative sentiments of our previous meetings might be mitigated. And then they discussed, a further discussion, a number of our members noted that even if we were to move to all-person, the requirement that they make accommodations would still exist, and it's a very broad definition. So a body as large as the RTM could negate the benefit of mandatory in-person meetings. It was suggested that that might cause more chaos in an already difficult situation. District 9 representatives noted that District 9 was in favor of the hybrid option, particularly in light of the concerns about recent meetings. Another member commented that attendance at RTM meetings was the highest it had ever been if we used a remote hybrid option. The moderator pro temp was asked if accommodations had ever worked in practice at the RTM. She was not aware if it had, other than that we have in place today, other than what we have in place today. Lucia Jansen, speaking as Chair of the BOC, reported that the BOC had voted 2, 9, 1 on this issue. While agreeing with the intent, increased camaraderie, et cetera, they recognized there are things that get in the way of successful in-person meetings. It was also mentioned by another member that he'd been on the RTM for 22 years with perfect attendance and a hybrid, but he is in favor of hybrid, which enables him to participate more frequently. It was also pointed out that voting either yes or no on this item would result in a hybrid because of the requirement for accommodation. So you're going to have hybrid whether you favor this motion or not. I mentioned that, as written, it is a resolution, but it does not amend the rules. So I was questioning whether it would have any impact other than a sense-of-the-meeting kind of position. We discussed that briefly and decided that we didn't have time to deal with amending it at the meeting. The vote on legal order was 7, 5, 0, but Districts 1, 4, 5, 8, and 12 voting no. On the merits, the vote was 0, 11, 1, with, of course, District 11 abstaining.
Thank you. Mr. Spiolo, are you providing a committee report?
There's no other committees.
Lucia Jansen, do you also have a committee report for this?
Some members, the Public Works Committee took up item 12. Some members felt this was in the purview of Public Works, others felt it was about how we conduct our meetings, and as such, should be referred to all committees for discussion, as most discussion happens at committee meetings and where there's an opportunity to question proponents and opponents. On item 12, we heard from Susan Fahey and Tom West of District 11. The moderator's technology group declined to attend, but the moderator informed me via email that she had no position regarding in-person meetings. Proponents felt that the RTM are better together, meeting in person, that we should require members to attend in person as much as possible. Proponents felt that in-person attendance would also force people to pay attention more closely. Discussion revolved around whether it was proper to force people to attend in person if they were legitimately sick or traveling for work. Some felt there could be a set number of excused absences which would allow remote voting. Others felt that this requirement may affect people with disabilities, especially during inclement weather. The committee discussed several possible ways of providing exceptions. Some felt that exceptions should be provided for parents who needed to put kids to bed, while others felt that such parents should make other arrangements, given that we only meet 10 times a year. Still, others felt there's--
Eight, we only meet eight times a year.
Eight, eight times a year. Okay. Still, others felt that there was a requirement for attending 2/3 of the meetings in the charter, and that this should be similarly used for in-person requirements. In the end, the committee couldn't settle on a single recommendation for any amendments to item 12, and we voted on the item as it appears on the call. The vote was 4, 4, 1. Those opposed felt the flexibility to attend remotely was useful. Abstentions needed more time.
Thank you. Lucia Jansen, Chair of the BOC Committee.
Our committee voted unanimously to take up this item. We felt that this was such an impactful item to RTM participation, we should weigh on this matter than just the Legislative and Rules Committee. Our District 11 BOC representative highlighted that the RTM benefits by being in person with a more focused and engaged RTM, and referred to the many distractions that occurred at the last RTM meeting. Although the BOC was very appreciative of the face-to-face interactions and agreement that members are less distracted, many BOC members relayed they have children, aging parents, and jobs that take them on occasion, out of town, and wanted to continue to have the flexibility and option to participate either remote or in person. Others mentioned that with the hybrid option, there has been more participation by RTM than ever before. The BOC vote was 2, 9, 1. Against this motion, District 9 and 11 had voted yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes all of the committees. Oh, yes.
I was going to speak in favor of it.
Well, we're going to have debate in a minute, so, okay. So there is a speaker sign-up sheet. So Susan Fahey, would you like to go first? You are the first person on the list. Oh, yes. You can let me address Ms. Fahey, since I've brought her to the thing, and then you can, don't go too far, Mr. Calb.
I can wait if you want.
Okay. Mr. Calb, you can offer your motion, then.
Good evening. I would like to make a motion to suspend the second read rules so that we can take up this item and vote on it tonight.
Is there a second to that? Okay. So pursuant to our second read requirement, a motion to suspend the rules is non-debatable and does require a 2/3 to pass. So if that motion, if Mr. Calb's motion were to pass, then we could take some sort of final vote up and down on the merits this evening. Okay? Does everyone understand that? Okay. So it is a non-debatable motion, it does require 2/3 to pass. Craig, I don't think we have Calb motion. Oh, yes, we do, we do, we do, we do. Motion to suspend the RTM rules for item 12, suspending the second read requirement? Well, go under, it was under the, hang on. Yeah, Craig, can you bring it up? I apologize, Mr. Calb, but you're not memorialized in this motion, but you'll get the gist of it. Okay. This is the Calb motion to suspend the RTM rule suspending the second read requirement. So you're suspending the rules to suspend the second read requirement. Okay? So if you are in favor of suspending the rules, and vote, you would vote yes, so that you could take this up as a first read. If you are opposed and you want to see this come back in June, you would vote no. Okay? It does require a 2/3 majority to pass. Everyone understand? Okay. Craig, could you please open the vote? Okay. The vote is now open, you may, one, two, or three, depending on how you'd like to vote. It's a good time to check your clicker, make sure you see a one, two, or three on it. And if you are inclined, you can go up to one of the five screens and see if your square has a blue square next to, your name has a blue square next to it. Okay. Is anyone expressing a problem with their clicker in the room? Okay, I don't hear anything. It doesn't appear that we have anyone online with an issue. Craig, could you please close that vote? Oh, wait, 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 wait. Wait. You need to promote them, you need to open the line, Jenny, so that they can speak, so we can hear what their issue is.
Oh, she's all set.
Who was it?
Beth McGilvery.
Beth McGilvery has a problem or does not have a problem?
She does not have a problem.
Did she identify what her potential problem was?
Yes.
And what was Beth McGilvery's potential problem? Was she? I do see that Beth McGilvery has a square that is blue next to her name, suggesting that she was able to vote. Is she confirming that she was able to vote? And online, does she have something on her computer that says her vote has been recorded?
Yes.
Yes, she does. Okay. Is there anyone else that has a problem? Okay. Craig, we are good to close the vote. Okay, I have the vote on the Calb motion to suspend the rules and take this up as a first read. Those in favor, 135, opposed 48, abstaining 2, that item has carried or passed. So Craig, could you please show that vote? Okay. Okay, so now we will open it up to debate. We have about six people who have signed up, and after that debate, we will be able to take a straight up or down vote on the merits of the item. Susan Fahey, you are our first speaker. You're all set. And I just want to point out, we have had no speaker time limits, so per Robert's rules, each speaker can speak up to 10 minutes. I don't think you'll be doing that. There are only six, there are only six people, but, you know. Yeah. I don't think they're going to do it. I'm just letting you know that there's no time limit in effect.
I'm pretty sure I'm under five, as the principal proponent.
Yeah, okay. No, there is no, it's, they're, they're fine. It's, I don't think she's going to go to 10 minutes.
It's going to be under five. And I'm speaking on behalf of the district. So good evening again, fellow RTM members. For a long time now, District 11 has been discussing the return to in-person meetings for our full RTM member meetings. Our district as a whole has believed in the tenet, we are better together. Many of you probably remember, we were one of the first districts to have an in-person meeting of June of 2021 outdoors in an open-air pavilion, and people thought we were pretty crazy. Yet our district, as you know, is made up of a wide swath of people with differing backgrounds, diverse in our political views, our upbringings, and the uses of our town. From volunteer firemen to bankers, from techies to titans, from homemakers to healers, we all bring different perspectives, fostering rich and sometimes lively debates. In March of 2020, facing a worldwide pandemic, the RTM pivoted to Zoom meetings. Faces of our members appeared in a Hollywood Square-type fashion that would light up only when that person spoke. Their speeches often only offering their political views on a particular item on the call before us. That person, for many, no longer became a human, but only the view that that person shared. No longer to be able to greet each other and have short conversations--
I'm pretty sure I'm under five as the principal proponent.
Yeah, okay. No, there is no... It's... They're fine. I don't think she's going to go to 10 minutes.
It's going to be under five. And I'm speaking on behalf of the district. So good evening again, fellow RTM members. For a long time now, District 11 has been discussing the return to in-person meetings for our full RTM member meetings. Our district as a whole has believed in the tenet, "We are better together." Many of you probably remember, we were one of the first districts to have an in-person meeting of June of 2021 outdoors in an open-air pavilion, and people thought we were pretty crazy. Yet our district, as you know, is made up of a wide swath of people with differing backgrounds, diverse in our political views, our upbringings, and the uses of our town. From volunteer fire... From volunteer firemen to bankers, from techies to titans, from homemakers to healers, we all bring different perspectives, fostering rich and sometimes lively debates. In March of 2020, facing the worldwide pandemic, the RTM pivoted to Zoom meetings. Faces of our members appeared in a Hollywood Square-type fashion that would light up only when that person spoke. Their speeches often only offering their political views on a particular item on the call before us. That person, for many, no longer became a human, but only the view that that person shared. No longer to be able to greet each other and have short conversations that we came in in and out of meetings or sometimes during about a child, a sport, an illness, a vacation, or a trip. Those were all lost, as was our ability at times, to be kind, respectful, thoughtful, and humanize each other as people working together, volunteering to make our town a better place. Now we have hybrid meetings, which still lack the personal and collaborative element that kept the RTM operating at its best. Many participants have found that the conduct of the hybrid meetings of the full RTM have added delays, significant additional work for our town employees, a large expense while also resulting in frustrations and... Sorry, frustrating outcomes for both in-person and remote participants. Personally, most of us agree that it's much more difficult to stay engaged while participating remotely. Distractions are much higher at home, vacation, or office, and the pull toward multitasking while on a call is also higher. As a person who spends about half of her church time remotely, I can attest to the fact that the pull is quite great. Jumping up to make coffee, going to the bathroom, or pausing to let the dog out will often have me less engaged in church than I should be. No one in D-11 would also argue it's more comfortable at home. The CMS chairs struggle to compete with a Barker lounger, or your legs up on an ottoman, fluffy socks, slippers draped in a clothesy blanket, with even maybe some a shared cocktail. Not to mention air temperatures we can control in a bathroom nearby. Despite these discomforts and inconveniences, many in District 11 still believe that in-person meetings foster an atmosphere with better and more respectful behavior and dialogue between members and guests, and encourage collaboration, camaraderie amongst all its members. When all members are in one location, the RTM functions as the best version of a governing body. We believe that you are elected to get to know, to serve alongside your neighbors. While we've heard many scenarios by why people wish to maintain hybrid options, none really can outrate the engaged diplomatic way in which we all serve better. It's important to remember that prior to the pandemic, there were no hybrid options. Members were allowed to miss five RTM meetings or one-third of the 16 meetings which were hosted over a two-year elected term. I myself missed them for spring concerts, lacrosse and hockey playoffs, or even a vacation, all of which you are allowed to take. This is a normal part of serving on any board or committee. People have conflicts which don't allow them to attend. Additionally, because the state policy provides consideration for people who have extenuating circumstances or disabilities or need accommodations, it will cover anyone that is in a wheelchair, chemotherapy, or other things that will arise of our members. However, things like putting your children to bed, walking your dog, or wintering in Palm Beach probably won't make the cut for a disability or accommodation. In speaking to Allen Gunsberg and Stephanie Howey this week, both on the Selectman's Disability Council, they both agreed that governance is better served in person, but wanted to make sure that we have a carve-out for those with disabilities or those that need accommodations. Allen also wanted to make sure that these accommodations or disability people are not abused. As a champion for those with disabilities, he even joked, as only Allen can, that if they need to stay home because their doctor says they don't have good night vision for driving, the letter should not only go to the moderator, but the chief of police. I'm always a sucker for humor. D-11 also had language that the moderator should have the discretion to pivot to hybrid or fully online meetings such an emergency require, which we spoke about before, a summer meeting, a severe weather event, or a possible large-scale health emergency. So I urge you all tonight to not vote for what is convenient and not vote for what is easier, but to do what is best for good governance. Serving on a board or a committee is a job. It's a responsibility, and it's an honor, even if it's a volunteer job. And to do it best, we need to be in person. I'm going to leave you with a quote from Steve Jobs in a 1996 interview. Steve compared teamwork and working together to rocks inside a tumbler. It's through the act of bumping into each other and tumbling together through the process of being a team that we polish each other and help each other to really shine. Thank you.
Thank you. Duncan Burke. To be followed by Tom West. So if Mr. West is here, he can come down to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Duncan Burke in District Two. I've been around half as long as Lucy Krasner in the RTM. And over the years, I think I do a lot of traveling and coming and going. And over the years, I think I petitioned two of the 22 years along the way, you know, for not making all the meetings. And I think the number of meetings I missed, you know, versus the qualifying number of meetings was one in the entire two-year process. So anyway, I've been around for a long time. I love the RTM. I like being in this room together tonight. And I feel different. I feel very positive about the experience we've had even recently, but the experience we had during the pandemic, all coming together in the way that we did. There were workouts. Our people in our districts were taking texts, and we were... I'm looking at one of them right now. We were doing very well together, getting everything done that needed to be done. And those are for our district meetings. And I think for the RTM as a whole, with a glitch here and a glitch there and so forth, I think we did amazingly well. And I think that many of us in the RTM in the last couple of meetings have, you know, about half... Half of us feel one way and half of us feel another way. So you almost could say that we all agree on one thing, that we're not all totally happy with, you know, what's happened in the past couple of meetings. However, having worked through it all, and here we are voting tonight, I also can say that I was able to vote in January, and I was not here. And I was able to find out by telephone that I did vote. But tonight, we can see how well this thing is working. And, you know, it's been a couple of meetings to get to here. And that is, I have to say, I compliment the efforts, you know, with Alexis and Meridia and everybody involved, Town Clerk, you know, Catherine, and so forth. I think that this meeting is going really well. And beyond that, I would like to say that I think we should have hybrid meetings. I think it's very important to many people who would like to be part of things and continue to be part of things. And I think continuity and experience coming from many years in the RTM would be a benefit if we have hybrid meetings, because people get older, have to travel more, have different family circumstances. They will be able to attend hybridly if they can't be here in person. So I think it's very, very important to have hybrid meetings. I mean, people who are severely disabled would be accommodated anyway, but there are a whole lot more people who, after a certain amount of time, might just not, you know, want to be involved on a, you know, a full attendance meeting. And I have to say, I think it's absolutely great to be together. And I strongly hope that the body will vote to vote against this full attendance meeting and go with the hybrid meetings. I think we've done very, very well, you know, for pandemic and as we come together now with our new system. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Tom West, to be followed by Scott Calb.
Hi. My name is Tom. Somebody said, "I feel like I got a support group over here." This is... I've been a member of RTM for several terms, and this is my first chance to talk to you all. So this is kind of cool for me. And do I get any kind of flour or boxes of candy? No? Okay.
We will memorialize it in the minutes.
Thank you. So I'd like to take... I'd like to take less than two minutes to give you some thoughts as to why you should consider voting for this motion that will make your lives less comfortable and less easy. So let's get right to it. I believe each of you in this room has a unique form of leadership, and the RTM in this town needs your best. And you can't give your best over Zoom. There's more wisdom in this group of 230 people than there is in a tree full of owls, and I'd like to see you use it. Cities and towns across this country are suffering because of crime, mental health issues, deteriorating schools, poor infrastructure, you know. If we want Greenwich to be an exception, the town needs your unique form of leadership. So show up for meetings. Show your loved ones that your priority as a leader in this community is to make it better. Let them see that it's not easy or comfortable. As an actuary, my job was to make predictions regarding mortality, morbidity, property costs, that kind of thing. I think for the next five years, this country will be very difficult... Have a very difficult time, unlike anything since World War II. My prediction for the RTM is a little rough in that I think five years from now, we will no longer be a 230-person body. The obituary for the RTM headline will be, "It was judged to be too clunky." But the real reason will be more subtle, and that is poor leadership. Let's not let that happen. Since being an actuary turned out to be so boring, I ended up fixing organizations for 40 years. And one thing I learned is that they all failed because of poor leadership. Arrogance, absence, priorities were wrong. They assumed the good things would continue, as they had in the past, and they simply did not pay attention or anticipate change. So I encourage you to support this motion. Show up. Use your unique leadership skills, and you will also have the additional benefit of knowing your neighbors better. And we will do better together. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Calb, to be followed by Lucy Krasnor.
Good evening, colleagues and Madam Moderator, and thank you for this opportunity to speak for just a moment. Looking from my glasses, they're on my head. So my name is Scott Calb. I'm from D-7, and I rise to urge you to vote no on item 12, the D-11 motion to end hybrid meetings at the RTM. I'm not... I have not prepared remarks that are quite as eloquent as our colleagues from D-11, Susan and Tom. They were beautiful comments, but I have to disagree with your sentiments in a very straightforward way. I believe that hybrid meetings allow us all the flexibility that we need to participate in RTM meetings when business or family matters intervene that can sometimes prevent in-person participation. I'm sure that everyone here at one time or another has found themselves in such a situation. It would be unfair to eliminate the voting rights of colleagues that have done the work and can participate remotely but cannot join the call in person because of some special circumstances. We also want to encourage wider participation in our legislative process, and we want to make sure it's representative of the broader community in our town. Hybrid meetings help to ensure such an outcome, and they support greater diversity in our RTM membership. We cannot afford to reduce the pool of qualified candidates for the RTM based on a requirement that they all must attend meetings in person in order to be able to have their votes counted. We're too big a body with too many seats to narrow the field in this way. I know the tallying votes from RTM members both inside and outside the room is complex, but the benefits of maintaining hybrid meetings far outweighs the inconvenience, in my view. Further, our moderator, our moderator pro temp, our IT consultants, our clerk's office, and our town attorney's office have all worked very hard to introduce improvements to our voting system that are making hybrid voting easier, more efficient, and more transparent, I think, as you've seen tonight. Accordingly, I urge you all to please vote no on item 12 to eliminate hybrid RTM meetings, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Lucy Krasnor. I'm sorry. Okay, so I've called Ms. Krasnor, so she's going to be acknowledged. And then we have one final speaker, which is Fetlana Wasserman. So I am not going to accept that now. I'm going to let this speaker go and the final speaker, and then that will be the final question. I think it would be unfair to leave the one person who has not been acknowledged an opportunity to speak. It's only... We have Lucy and then Fetlana Wasserman. Okay.
Good evening to all members and the moderator. First of all, let me just say, the reason I've been on the RTM for so many years and enjoyed it all those years is I truly feel being on the RTM is the only way to really know what goes on in our town, and that's very important to me. I think there is an urgency to support this motion to have in-person meetings. We only meet eight times a year. That is not every week. That is not once a month. That's eight times a year that I believe we should meet in person. One of the things that I think is really has been lost with what happened at Zoom for the whole time we were in Zoom, or even in the hybrid, is the spontaneity of saying, as I have done many times over the years, I felt I needed to respond to some comment I heard, and I spontaneously raised my hand and was called upon by the moderator to make a comment. I have never, as many people make very long page after page after page comment, I have never done that. I've just made short, spontaneous comments, oftentimes being effective in what's been going on. So I think we've lost that, and I think that's really too bad. The spontaneity to respond, which really the sign-up sheet idea, I don't think is a good one. I think if we all were in person, we would go back to spontaneity. Yes, have a sheet, which we did have at the tables from time to time, on issues that we expected a lot of people. But on other issues, the spontaneity of being able to speak when a comment was necessary, I felt was very important. Notwithstanding that, it's not terrible that if you have to miss a meeting once in a season because you're traveling or because of sickness or whatever, that's not the worst thing in the world. And I don't think we should change the regulation for the possibility that someone has to miss a meeting. That just is what happens to all of us from time to time. Additionally, the costs are... I'm surprised that the BOC and others have not been concerned about the extra cost of running a bifurcated meeting. So I think that that is something we don't need to pay and should not be paid if we were all here together. So I would urge you to vote in favor of in-person meetings entirely and keep the spontaneity of the meetings, the speakers, and eight times a year, I don't think is too much to ask people to leave their homes and come to the meetings in person. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Moderator... Mr. Byrne, why don't you come to the podium?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just following up on that point, is it possible for the moderator to share with us what the cost and the time of preparation for setting up these meetings is?
Yes. So the cost for our last meeting in March was about $11,900. The cost of that is broken down into when we have Meridia, a representative from Meridia, come. It's a flat fee of $4,500. We do not have someone here tonight. We're trying to cut back. Craig is doing yeoman's work, manning that ship. In the May meeting, we will have someone from Meridia come. And we have used them at the December meeting, the January meeting, the March meeting, and the May meeting. So that's $4,500. Then we get here very, very early in the afternoon, sometimes around 3:30 in the afternoon. All the wires that you see have to be taped down. The televisions you'll see are in cases. They have to be moved here. It's a little bit like being on a roadshow for a band where you have to do all the electrical and the audio setup. We have that camera. We have, I don't know how many, microphones around. It's just a lot of setup work. So that is an hourly fee for Jenny, for Craig, for Dan, and for whoever else they might use that evening. We have IT support, which Jenny provides throughout the month. So those trainings that you may have gone to last month to help you get acclimated again to using your device, there's an hourly fee for that. There was a member in District Six who needed two hours of technical support, and I think the bill for that was about $256 to help that person. So there was a cost for everything. So there was a cost for everything. I'm trying to think if there's, so we have the tech cost, we have the time. When that meeting ended, I think it was 12:04, that we adjourned, we were here until 1:30 in the morning packing up. So it is a long day for the people who do this. I'm not saying either way, but that, that sort of is how it adds into the cost. Was there any other part of your question, Mr. Byrne, or was that it? Okay. We offer no, we have no position on that there. We're happy to do it. Yeah. Could you go to the podium, Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Okay, based on what you just said, there's some expenses that would be incurred regardless of whether we do remote.
Correct.
Such as the monitors.
Correct. So you are correct. There are some, I would imagine that if we did not have a hybrid option, the most clunky part, as you can see, of running the meeting is when there's a problem with someone who's online, right? And the time that it takes both for our team to help that person, whether it's in the meeting or outside of the meeting, because they need a little bit of extra coaching. So I imagine that if you were to eliminate hybrid, and I'm not offering a position on this, I'm just saying what our expense, how they would fluctuate, you would probably drop a considerable amount of the consulting tech amount that you are providing because you just have a three-button clicker, and it's yes, no, abstain. We would probably also be able to shed the Meridia consultant who we hire, because at that point, it's, it's just, you know, monitoring the 230 clickers that are assigned. So there is, you are correct that the time that it takes to set up will still be time that it takes to set up, but there are some, some fluctuations in that price. Anything else? Okay. Who was, Svetlana Wasserman. Svetlana Wasserman is our final speaker. Oh, Ms. Wasserman, who is online. Yeah, just bring her up so we can hear her.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Honorable Members of the RTM. Speaker Vulgaris. I signed up to urge you to vote against this motion. I know that tallying votes from members in and outside the room can be difficult, but the harm of ending hybrid meetings far outweighs the inconvenience of these meetings. Why do we have one of the largest municipal legislative bodies in the nation? It's because we honor our local New England town meeting tradition of inclusive self-government. Ending hybrid meetings will raise the bar for many who want to serve but who can't afford an entire evening away from home. As other speakers mentioned, this includes families with young children, especially women, people with elder care responsibilities, people who can't get out of the office in time or traveling for work, and people with disabilities. I have heard RTM members say that if the hybrid option goes away, so will they. Do we want an RTM that's less diverse? Do we want one that leans primarily towards older retired representatives because they have less of these family responsibilities? Is this fair to our voters? I urge you to vote against this amendment and preserve the RTM as the diverse and open body that it was always aimed to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that, Ms. Wasserman, was our final speaker. So we are going to proceed to a vote. Craig, let's see what we have. I believe it is item 12, District 12 motion to eliminate the hybrid meeting option at full RTM meetings. I'm sorry, District 11. You're going to have to, you're going to have to change it on my motion sheet. Sorry, District 11. Here, I'll walk over there. Okay, hang on, hang on, hang on. Jenny, Jenny. Okay, so we're going to open the voting window. Craig, are you ready to open it? Okay. The voting window is open. Is it open? Yep, it's open. So if you're in favor of the District 11 motion to eliminate the hybrid meeting option at full RTM meetings, you would vote yes. If you're opposed to that, you would vote no. Okay, you have about 30 seconds left, so you're going to want to check your clickers to make sure your vote has been registered, one, two, or three. You can go up to one of the screens and check and see if your square is blue if you intend to vote on this. We don't have anyone online who's saying that they have an issue. Is there anyone in the room with an issue with their clicker, or can we close that vote? I do not hear anyone saying that they have an issue with the clicker, so we are going to close the vote. Craig, could you please close the vote? Okay, so I have the vote on the District 11 motion to eliminate the hybrid option. Those in favor, 53; opposed, 132; abstaining, 5. That motion has failed. Okay. Craig, could you please show the vote? Okay. That brings us to the final item this evening, which is item 13, which is a resolution submitted by petition of 20 registered voters to amend the electronic voting rules. I'm not sure who is introducing that resolution. Do we have someone who's introducing that? Is someone here to introduce it? Mr. Spilo, you are introducing it. Go to the podium, please.
This is a petition to bring the following item to the floor. Resolve that the representative town meeting of the town of Greenwich hereby amends the rules of the representative town meeting by amending Section 3, Organization and Procedures, Part 1, Procedures at Meetings, Section 4, Voting Procedure, Part 4B, Item 4, to provide for electronic voting as it appears on the call.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Does a motion by petition need a second?
The motion is, even, it has been moved in second. It is now before us. So may we have the reports from the committees that considered this item? Mr. Spilo, are you going first? Mr. Bergweger, who's, who's gonna? Mr. Bergweger, are you going first?
No.
Okay.
As I mentioned before, Legislative and Rules met two Mondays ago. At this, for item 13, we had assisting us Christina Volkvine and Peggy Heppelman. Christina was one of the proponents of this. Peggy was there on behalf of Mr. Spilo, who was also one of the proponents. Ms. Volkvine provided background for the proposed resolution, citing various reasons, including anecdotal evidence of inefficiencies and technological mishaps. She claimed that remedies put in place at the March meeting had been ineffective, referencing the lengthy early voting periods in March as proof of this point. She noted that 77 signatures of citizens and RTM members are on the petition in support of this resolution. She pushed for transparent voting and time for voter verification. She denied that there would be issues arising for herd mentality as during COVID, there was transparency in individual districts due to the texting mechanism in place. Ms. Heppelman noted deficiencies in the 1980s ticker technology and cited data that continued use of this technology would result in a persistent fail rate of about not 1%. She provided details of her own personal experience on a recent vote where the clicker did not reflect the vote she intended. Glenn Kaner objected to the proponents' use of references to third parties in supporting documents because there was not confirmation of the information included. Rick Marganat commented that he had been unable to open some of the supporting links. Lucy von Brockel noted that Meridia includes contradictory statements on its website on this topic. Visual confirmation is not defined as red-green display of actual votes. Other people spoke up in favor of the Electronic Voting Committee. I noted that, in its present form, this proposal has never been of the RTM's process, and I'll talk about that later. Let's see. Ms. Lubalbo, who was there, suggested it would increase difficulty. And if we have, well, let me back up. I suggested that one possible approval to get for voter verification was not to wait for three minutes, but to wait for 20 seconds. And that actually appealed to some people, although some others thought that making changes in technology to the rules could cause us to, difficulty. But the RTM could learn and adjust to the new system. We took the vote on legal order, and then vote was 2, 9, 1. District 3 and 7 voting yes, and District 6 abstaining. The item failed 1, 10, 1 on the merits. District 7 voting yes, and District 10 abstaining. One of the reasons given for voting no on legal order was that the amendment goes beyond the material content of the section of the rules and even broadens it. Another reason for legal order vote, or lack of legal order, was lack of verification of the reasons for the modifications requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spilo with the Public Works Committee.
Your Public Works tried to take up item 13. I'm sorry to report that the discussion at Public Works was not very constructive. Before the chair introduced the item, a member from District 6 interrupted with a motion to postpone indefinitely. This was ruled out of order because the item had not been introduced, and the member from D-6 did not have the floor as required for a motion to postpone indefinitely. This ruling was shouted down by committee members who insisted that the motion was properly made and seconded. To avoid commotion, the motion was allowed by the chair, and the chair called for discussion, at which point several members of the committee insisted that the motion to postpone indefinitely is not debatable. The chair produced a chart from the rules of the RTM which showed that the motion to postpone indefinitely was debatable and attempted once again to introduce the item, the member from District 6, and to discuss whether the item should be killed. The member from District 6 interrupted the discussions, claiming that the discussions must be confined to the motion. The chair explained that in accordance with Robert's rules, a motion to postpone indefinitely is a motion to kill the item, and discussion on the merits of the item were thus allowed. A member from District 6 would not accept and interrupted with constant shouts of not on the merits. When the chair concluded his comments, a member from District 6 immediately called the question and was seconded. This was ruled not in order, but given the commotion, no one else wished to have further discussion, and the committee voted on the motion to postpone indefinitely, 7, 2, 0, with Departments 4, 5, and 10 absent. The Public Works Committee typically discusses and votes on merits of an item in the event a motion brought by the committee fails at the RTM. No such vote took place. Upon review, the motion to postpone indefinitely was out of order, and the discussion was shouted down improperly with unruly behavior and interruptions. However, since the committee did take a vote, the motion should be considered by the RTM, and I'll make that when the time is appropriate.
Thank you. I believe there were no other committee or districts that shook this up. So, Mr. Spilo, before you come back, so I want to say one thing. You may have heard that the Legislative and Rules Committee voted on the merits, or the legal order of this item, 2, 9, 1, which would normally suggest that it's out of legal order. I did review their meeting minutes, and it does appear that they were conflating merits with legal order. So I do not agree that the item is out of legal order, so it can come forward. And I did apprise all of the chairs of that decision that we could go Friday, asking them to share it with their members. So you should already be aware of that. In order to adopt a motion to postpone, this item is a proposed change to our rules, so it requires a second read. A motion to postpone indefinitely is a dispositive action. It's a finality. In order to even consider that motion, we would first need to adopt a motion to suspend the rules to consider a motion to postpone, or up or down on the merits of this item later, by a two-thirds vote. So before we can even get to the Public Works motion, we would first need a motion to suspend the rules, the second read requirement. Is there such a motion? Mr. Meskers offers that motion. Is there a second to that motion? The motion has been moved in second. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and does require a two-thirds majority to pass. So we will need to put up Craig. The oh, I hope I put it in the deck. I think it says motion to yes, item 13, motion to suspend the RTM rules suspending the second read requirement. Do you see that? Okay. So we're going to put that up. And it does require a two-thirds majority to pass, to suspend the rules. Okay. So this would be the Meskers motion to suspend the RTM rules suspending the second read requirement. So if you're in favor of suspending the rules to allow the body to take this item up as a first read, you would vote yes. If you If you don't want to take it up, and it will come back to us in June, you would vote no. Okay. Craig, can you start the clicker timer? Okay, the timer is on. You may cast your vote. You have about 30 seconds left. It's a good time to check your clicker, check the screen. Okay. I'm sorry, what? Who's, who are we, I'm sorry, who are we holding for? Who are we holding it for? Who? No, no, no. I want to know who we're holding it for. Who are we holding the vote open for? Brad Radley-Avaki is the, and are we, what is his issue that we are holding the vote open for? So Brad Radley-Avaki went home, he left the meeting, he went home, and he is trying to get home and vote online? So how, where is he, is he asking us to keep the vote open for him? Can we put him on a... So put him on the... So, so, wait a minute, wait, 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 wait. Hang on, everybody just needs to be quiet, because I need to figure out. We, I would like Mr. Radley-Avaki to express online or on the phone, but apparently he's not on the phone, because he's trying to get, I mean, he's not on Zoom, because he's trying to get home. So is he asking us to hold a vote open for him while he is trying to get home to vote? Or may we close the vote? I need to know that. So I am hearing now that Brad Radley-Avaki is saying we can close the vote and not give him, he is not going to make us wait to... Okay, so he cannot, we cannot, okay. Okay, so we are going to move forward without Brad Radley-Avaki, who's in some suspended state of trying to get on and is not there. So is there anyone in the room who has a problem with their clicker? I don't hear anything. Craig, could you please close the vote? Okay, so I have the vote on the Meskers motion to suspend the rules and take this item up as a first read. Those in favor, ninety-two, opposed, eighty, abstaining, two, that motion has failed. That means that your Public Works motion to postpone indefinitely cannot come before the body, because it would be a dispositive action, and we have just learned that the body does not want to do that. So this means that we will open up the debate. We have ten people who have, would like to speak on the merits of this item. It will come back in June automatically. So I will call the names. You can decide if you would like to offer your comments or if you would like to pass, okay? Yes, Mr. Rubin. You may, you may make a motion, so. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to limit debate to two minutes, and five minutes for the proponent and five minutes for the major opponent.
Okay. So this is the Rubin motion to limit debate for presumably the balance of the meeting, which is only one item. It would be two minutes per speaker, per motion, per item. We don't have any motions on this item right now. With five minutes for the proponent and opponent. And Craig, do you see that on the sheet? This is, this would require a, a motion to limit debate is non-debatable and does require a two-thirds majority to pass. So I just want to, if people are leaving now, we are about to open a vote, so I really don't want people turning in a clicker while a vote is open in the event that they inadvertently press a button. So Craig, can you...
We may have lost a quorum automatically.
Well, we have people online, and we have people here in a quorum. Trivia question, Mr. Spilo, what is a quorum for the full RTM?
One-third.
And what is one-third?
Ah, that's a good question. About seventy?
It is about seventy-seven, exactly. I, you know, that will be on the moderator's quiz next week, so you're one step ahead. So can we put the sheet up, please? Right, so this is a motion to limit debate to two minutes per speaker, per motion, five minutes for the proponent and opponent. It does require two-thirds to pass, and it is non-debatable. Craig, can you start the... Okay. So we're going to start the clicker, or you're going to start the timer. You may cast your vote now. Please don't, Richard Newman and Kathy Steele, just wait until the vote is closed, because I don't want a clicker to inadvertently... You have about 30 seconds to cast your vote, if you have not already done so. This would be the time to do it. Okay, is there anyone in the room who has an issue with their clicker? I haven't heard anybody online. Is there an issue with the clicker? Okay. Do not turn in, John McShay, do not turn that in while this vote is open, okay? So I am going to close the vote, okay? Now you may turn it in, and if anyone's leaving, please make sure you turn in your clicker. Don't take it home with you. We need to await the vote on this, and then we'll have debate, and then we'll wrap it up. Okay, the vote on the motion to limit debate to speakers to two minutes per speaker, per motion, with five minutes for the proponent and the opponent. Those in favor, one hundred and thirty-four, opposed, eighteen, abstaining, two, that motion has carried. So for the remainder of the meeting, we will have a two-minute speaker time limit, with the exception of the, and this is just for the merits of the item. Michael Spilo, you are the first speaker.
Thank you. I'm going to be very brief. I don't think there's much point in having the discussion here when it should be held at committee and district. And I hope, I hope the item will be referred to all the committees. But I do want to share an old anecdote. It's about a Russian fellow who expressed confusion regarding why it takes us so long to vote and to get results from a vote. He said, in his country, they don't have this problem, because they know the results two weeks in advance. So it may take us a long time to vote, but I think that's a good thing. And the petition was brought by members who are concerned that our voting process continued to be excellent. I'll leave you with that. Have a good night.
Stephen Meskers, to be followed by Peggy Heppelman. And I believe Peggy Heppelman is online.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I rise in opposition to the motion. I believe we spent an inordinate amount of time through the Speaker's office, through Legislative and Rules, to figure out the voting process. I think since we've been through the process through March and going forward, the error rates, the procedures, and the clarity has shown itself. In relation to the motion to postpone indefinitely while, while no longer on the table, the issue was basically that I felt it was not the purview of Public Works to be involved in the process. I thought it, we deserve to be at Legislative and Rules, and I joined that committee to do Public Works. And that was why we had a rather contentious meeting. Now, if I violated the rules in terms of how I interpreted the merits in the discussion, I will offer up an apology on that. But nevertheless, I believe it's important that we stay focused on the business at hand. I appreciate the amount of time you've spent, the effort in getting the voting system right. I don't see any reason to revisit it. And as I understand, the petition is not from a majority of RTM members, per se. And I think that the RTM in and of itself is more than capable of governing itself. And I thank you for the efforts you put in in creating what I think is a logical and sane voting procedure. And I don't see any reason to take it up and revisit it. And so I will offer that motion to postpone again in my next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy Heppelman, if you are online, Ms. Heppelman, could you raise your hand so that you could be unmuted and acknowledged by our tech team?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. So, Madam Moderator and fellow RTM members, as you know, this is Peggy Heppelman. I'm from District eleven. I wanted to speak on this, because when we initially had the problems with the register our voters vote, I actually believed that all the voting issues were user error. And I was sympathetic that people didn't really understand some of the issues with the system, but I actually believed the issues were user error. And I believed that until our March meeting, when I realized that assumption was wrong. In the March meeting, I voted yes on the consent calendar. And, you know, we were going through this, so I wanted to make sure I did it right. I mean, I did, I waited, you know, for 30 seconds after the vote was opened before I voted. I voted yes, pressed one, my clicker showed one. I voted, once and only once throughout the entire process, my clicker showed one. And then when the vote came up on the screen after the vote was closed, much to my shock, my vote was abstained. And I went and talked to the Meridia table, and they held my clicker through the next vote, and it worked fine. And I don't know if Mr. Spilo is right about the 1% error rate, but there's definitely an error rate in this. Two votes later, a gentleman behind us voted no, so behind the, where District eleven was sitting. And he ended up with the same thing. His vote came out as abstained when it was shown. And in both those cases, the votes were closed.
Thank you very much, time. Scott Kalb, to be followed by Duncan Burke. I don't know if Mr. Burke is still here. Mr. Kalb is passing, Duncan Burke is passing, Svetlana Wasserman? She would be online. Is she still there, Jenny? All right, I don't think we have Ms. Wasserman anymore online. Eric Bailey, I believe he's also online. He is passing. Lucy von Brockel, passing Christina Volkwein.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Fellow RTM members, I just want to speak and offer a few thoughts to keep in mind, maybe as we, time goes by before we consider this again.
The clock needs to be running on that speaker.
I bet you're all wondering what I'm going to say about this item. One of our great presidents famously said, "Trust but verify." Voting for item thirteen is a vote for transparency, accuracy, and speed, and Meridia's own best practices. The RTM sold the Meridia system on the grounds that we could save four minutes per voting item, cutting an hour or so from our meeting time. However, we've seen in the past few meetings that the blue-gray confirmation of votes cast method does not deliver the accuracy or time savings we were promised, and it never can, at least while we have hybrid meetings, which it looks like we're going to have, because of all the shortcomings of technology and phone communications. Regarding the fear of herd mentality with an open visual vote and confirmation, I find this fear troubling. We are all mature adults. This is not middle school, even though we meet in one. Presumably, all in this body are voting, number one, to represent the interests of their district constituents, and number two, in good conscience. Even if we differ, I believe everyone votes that way in this body. As long as this is the case, even if we disagree on individual resolutions, I think we are all able to withstand peer pressure. And if you want your vote to be a secret, maybe you need to ask yourself why. And by the way, democracy dies in darkness. It would seem to be a given that if members are for a resolution, they want to make sure their votes count accurately. And if they are against a resolution equally, they also want their votes to count accurately in order to stop whatever the other side wants. I really don't understand who could be against item thirteen. Openly displayed voting is the only accurate and efficient way to fully achieve the advantages of electronic voting for speed and accuracy. Please vote for item thirteen. Thank you.
And our final speaker is Kip Bergweger. All right, thank you, all right. So, all right. So this item will come back in June. There being... So this item will come back in June. There being no further business, our meeting stands adjourned at 10:51. Thank you very much, and we'll see you in May at the budget meeting.